Call the meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Blunier.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Menold.
Here.
Newman.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Has to join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There are no public hearing tonight. There are presentations or special reports. Is there any comment from the public?
As always, Ray. Good evening. Lee Ann Brown with the Morton Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. We are wrapping up our reimagined Pumpkin Festival, Roaring Pumpkins and all that jazz. And I want to let you know to save the date for Tuesday, October 27th over the lunch hour, 11:30 to 1:00 out at Idlewood Park. We plan on doing our check presentation to our give backs and celebrate with our sponsors, our chairman, and all those that helped us host our 54th Reimagine Festival. So again, Tuesday, October 27th will be our festival give back out at Idlewood Park from 11:30 to 1:00. We'll be serving up hot dogs and bringing out the big check and celebrating what festival means to our community and all that participated and the dollars that we can give back to many different groups and organizations. Also, that time of year, Trick or Treat, what used to be Trick or Treat Main Street, will be Trick or Treat Morton. We will launch this year on Friday, October 23rd. We will be putting together 1,000 goodie bags to be distributed out at VFW. So we're playing off on the reverse parade. It went well out there, so allow cars to pull through there, pick up their goodie bag. And I'll have candy, lots of candy, and then the description and handout of what all the businesses will be doing over the course of the next week. So we're encouraging businesses, registration's still open. If you want to host something one day or throughout the week, certain specials, experiences. So we're gonna, instead of one night, a couple hours of several thousand people downtown, we're gonna spread it out throughout our community and safely host our Trick or Treat experience. Congratulations to Touch Wellness, and they had their grand opening celebration last Friday. Hosted a great grand opening and again, just an incredible project by many of our Morton businesses to make that project happen. So great to have that redeveloped space in Touch Wellness open in there and Eli's their headquarters coming soon. And then just a couple regional and funding updates. The big table, several sessions will be hosted this month, October 19th through the 22nd. We had a huge success of our regional big table sessions last fall, so we're gonna continue on, host virtually. But there's four different topics, so you can pick one or all four topics, tune in over the lunch hour on October 19th through the 22nd and be a part of those regional conversations. Also, the speaking of big, another big, the big grant, the Business Interruption Grant is still open. They're encouraging the state DCO, encouraging all businesses to apply. They really tried to open up round two to accommodate our businesses. I know a lot of people here throughout Illinois and locally are state funding program. It doesn't really make a jump for joy. We went through the process, nonprofits qualify for this round. It really is not that bad. You're gonna compare your 2019 July and August bank statements to your 2020 July and August bank statement. So just if you have any questions, just make sure you're reading through that information, sharing it with your networks, encourage people to look at this application and apply to help our businesses. So that's all I had, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to talk?
Hello, I'm Amanda Parker and I'm here with my husband, Jason Parker. Later on in the agenda, you'll get to hear from Brad, who will be presenting the Resolution 1221 regarding the proposed zoning amendment for tattoo shops. We're here on behalf of that amendment and we would really like your consideration. I brought some information about my husband. He's the talent, the creative talent. I work at State Farm and I'm in communications, which is why I'm up here and he's sitting there. But it is a little different. I usually do the writing, so a little nervous, but appreciate you all hearing from us tonight. And I'll just pass this out quickly. If you have any questions, we're very open to answering anything that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no. She got another one.
Am I supposed to pass this down?
No. You have to memorize it.
Yeah.
Is that what this is for? We both get this?
I guess, yeah.
I'm sorry, my fault.
Yeah. All right, thank you. The consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting September 21st, 2020, closed session September 21st, 2020, and the approval of the bills. If we could have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Menold.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have nothing tonight. Village Clerk.
Just one brief item tonight, Your Honor. The April 2021 consolidated election petition collecting period has opened. That will go through December 21st with a filing period of December 14th through the 21st. There are three offices open for candidacy, village president, village clerk, and three village trustee seats. Anybody who has any questions, feel free to give me a call or email.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief of Police.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporation Counsel.
I have two items tonight, Your Honor. The first is ordinance number 21-23, making amendments to Chapter 8 of Title III of the Morton Municipal Code regarding catering organizations.
If we could have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Did you explain?
Yeah, the ordinance that is before you would create two new classifications of liquor licenses, one an annual license for a mobile bar as, or on a mobile bar for a catering organization, a second, a single event license. The village has received inquiries from businesses and individuals interested in hosting one-time events and that aren't bars, but that would like to contract with a catering organization to provide the alcohol service. And there are businesses in the area that provide that service. They have a state issued liquor license and to be able to serve locally, they'd have to have a local license. So they didn't fit neatly within any of our classifications of existing licenses. So in coordination with staff and great help from Julie and Tammy, we focused in on the idea of a catering organization license and license before, as I mentioned, the ordinance before you allow that annual license if a business expects to regularly host activities and events within the village or for a special event if they were coming in to just do a one-time only proposition.
Any questions?
Quick question, just to make sure I understand. Like if I have, if I want to have a wedding in my backyard and I have a caterer come in to serve alcohol, that would be, this license would be for that, like a one-time deal? Does that, but that caterer, they get the one-time license, they can only do it one time versus if they go to the, is it the J1 versus J2?
Yes.
One's a one-time deal, one's a multiple times, as many times as they want to do it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And the inquiries, we've had primarily been businesses wanting to hold special events and offer alcohol for patrons at those events, but it would, the concept would apply similarly to a, you know, wedding or a, you know, a transitory event.
Okay. The other question, the hour limitations on service, I think it was till 10:00 PM if it was an outdoor event, is that, I'm not arguing that that's not a good idea, but where did that come from or where did that stem from?
We have other license classifications which allow for special events and in those license classifications for special events, if the event's held outdoors, it's the same hours as service.
Okay, that makes sense.
So going along with what trustee Parrott just asked, if somebody were to have a wedding in their backyard, that would be an R classification. Do we allow the sale of liquor in residential areas?
I don't know the, we don't generally issue liquor licenses in residential areas and we have limitations for businesses whose primary purpose is to sell alcohol and the distance between those business brick and mortar locations to other residential areas. However, we have, I believe in the past, and the village administrator can correct me, but we have from time to time that special events license is issued for special events that occurred in a residential area. I believe Blessed Sacrament has received liquor licenses before for their parish carnival. So it would not be inconsistent with prior practice for a special event license to be issued for a special event in a residential area.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Menold.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Second ordinance I have this evening is ordinance number 21-24, which is an ordinance making amendments regarding rules and regulations for the use of village parking lots and outdoor gathering spaces to Title 8 of the Morton Municipal Code, which ordinance would be subject one requested amendment. There's a typographical error, which trustee Leach brought to my attention in Section 8- bear with me.
17-3.
17-3, paragraph A.
3.
3. The words "of the" should be in strike-through font to be stricken. The draft you have provides any use of the by a certain group, certain person or group or group of persons, the exclusion of others would trigger a license being required or a permit being required. It used to say Memorial Plaza, we took out Memorial Plaza in a prior revision, but the words "of" and "the" were left in as kind of orphans in a prior error. And so we proposed, or I would ask that and propose this ordinance be treated as amendment, amended with the words "of" and "the" stricken as indicated in 817-3A-3. With that.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anything, anything else you need to?
Two notes. The prior ordinance prohibited sales and solicitation within the Memorial Plaza and other village outdoor gathering spaces. This ordinance would allow sales and solicitation, but only to those, if they're required to have an itinerant merchant's, peddler's, or solicitor's license, they must have that license. Also, their permit for their event must specifically permit sales or solicitation. And we've also included a minimum insurance standard, which is based upon recommendation from the village's insurer.
So, Your Honor, could I ask a question? This is just, I don't think it's typographical, but it could be in section, I think it's the second page, Section 817-5, certificate of insurance. Underneath the bold where it talks about the $1 or $2 million aggregate, there is the sentence that starts the village administrator or her designate, designate at her full and absolute discretion. I was wondering if, instead of her, because I realize Julie is her, but I'm wondering if the future administrator may not be a her, if we should say their designate at their full and absolute discretion. Just asking.
The, we can certainly make that change. I don't profess to be a grammar czar. I think I wrote this language and I used her because the village administrator refers to one person and I believe "their" is a pronoun referring to two or more persons. So I think it'd be his or her, or you could go one or the other. But I don't profess, while I just stated what I thought the grammatical norm was, I don't profess to be grammar, the grammar police, so I could be wrong in that regard. And that could be noted in the, the moving in the second agree to that change, we can make that typographical adjustment and include that in your action tonight.
So we need a motion to change that?
Well, if the, both the individual who made the motion and the second would accept that as a friendly amendment to their motion, then that would be part of what is called when the vote is called.
Okay, I do, I do too.
Anything else? Any other questions?
And that's to change to his or her?
It would be their. Trustee Leach's recommendation was their. Yep.
I think there's nothing else that's called a roll.
Menold.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
My second item tonight, Your Honor, is ordinance 21-22, it's making amendments to Title 10 of the Morton Municipal Code regarding esports cafes.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Further explanation?
Yes, so esports cafe, we're proposing as a permitted use. This was given a favorable recommendation by the plant commission. We have a person in town that would like to open such a business and we just did not have a permitted use. And speaking with attorney McGrath, we felt like the B2 was an appropriate area to put that.
Any other questions? Any other questions, concerns? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourth item tonight, Your Honor, is Resolution 12-21 regarding proposed zoning amendment on tattoo parlors in the B2 general business district.
Move to approve.
Want a second?
I'll second though.
Want to explain that?
Yeah, so this resolution would authorize the plant commission to conduct a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment. And then they would make a recommendation back to the village board for your vote.
Go ahead.
Supplementing what Brad said, this, again, it's not a yes or no on the proposed amendment. The proposed amendment hasn't even been written yet. It would authorize me to write it, the plant commission to hold a hearing on it. Ultimately, it would wind up right back to you for final approval, which is where the esports cafes matter fell. From time to time, there are zoning amendments that are proposed by staff and other times individuals propose zoning amendments. Prior practice has been when the individual proposes an amendment, I think the last time we had this was before many of you were on the board, but when we allowed car washes in the B2 district, the procedure has been it comes here, you vote on it, initiate the process. And in that, the, one of the reasons for that is if, you know, theoretically, if there is no support of the board to the change, it saves the plant commission from spending time conducting a hearing to make a recommendation, bring it back to you if there isn't any interest in the change.
Call the roll.
Can I ask the council a question, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
If it doesn't get four votes, do we poll the other two trustees?
We do not. So this does not require four votes because it's not making expenditure of village funds. So as a resolution, which is not creating a liability, it would be a majority of those voting. So if, with four voting, if three vote yes, we'd go forward with the hearing.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Menold.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Third item tonight, Your Honor, is a zoning amendment, 20-06.
Could we have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
If you recall, this is property 2711 West Jackson Street. Kyle Lucktafield was annexed into the village. When he became annexed into the village, he needed a zoning classification for that property, I believe attorney McGrath, it defaults to RS, is that correct?
Yes.
We felt like R1 was the appropriate zoning classification for this property.
All right, any other questions, concerns? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Menold.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourth item tonight, Your Honor, is Resolution 12-21 regarding proposed zoning amendment on tattoo parlors in the B2 general business district.
Move to approve.
Want a second?
I'll second though.
Want to explain that?
Yeah, so this resolution would authorize the plant commission to conduct a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment. And then they would make a recommendation back to the village board for your vote.
Go ahead.
Supplementing what Brad said, this, again, it's not a yes or no on the proposed amendment. The proposed amendment hasn't even been written yet. It would authorize me to write it, the plant commission to hold a hearing on it. Ultimately, it would wind up right back to you for final approval, which is where the esports cafes matter fell. From time to time, there are zoning amendments that are proposed by staff and other times individuals propose zoning amendments. Prior practice has been when the individual proposes an amendment, I think the last time we had this was before many of you were on the board, but when we allowed car washes in the B2 district, the procedure has been it comes here, you vote on it, initiate the process. And in that, the, one of the reasons for that is if, you know, theoretically, if there is no support of the board to the change, it saves the plant commission from spending time conducting a hearing to make a recommendation, bring it back to you if there isn't any interest in the change.
Call the roll.
Can I ask the council a question, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
If it doesn't get four votes, do we poll the other two trustees?
We do not. So this does not require four votes because it's not making expenditure of village funds. So as a resolution, which is not creating a liability, it would be a majority of those voting. So if, with four voting, if three vote yes, we'd go forward with the hearing.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
No.
Menold.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, village trustees, trustee Leach.
One item tonight, Your Honor, we had tabled the ordinance 21-20 discussing elected official compensation. I make a, I assume I make a motion to untable it, so I make that motion.
Second.
You want to make any other comments or?
I think we have to vote on that first or?
It's, I view your motion essentially placing the substance matter back on the floor, so I think you can have discussion on the substance.
Okay. As discussed two weeks ago, the idea of adjusting elected official pay from trustees from $100 a month to $125 a month for the mayor from 8,000, 8,000 a year to 10,000 a year. I had written the wrong number down for counsel, so he put down, I think, what I wrote and I didn't calculate with a calculator, I used my head. But anyway, the idea is, you might ask the question again, why or why now? The thing that I would say is, is that looking at future boards, it's for future boards this would be done, so whoever gets elected and placed in, as a trustee in May, it's for them. It would not affect trustee Blunier, trustee Menold, or myself. It only affects those officials who would be elected. Then in the future, in two years, if the three trustees that it doesn't affect now I choose to run and get elected, which are two different things, then it would affect their pay as well. I personally think that you trustees are worth it, from my perspective, and I would, again, recommend approval.
I'm strongly opposed to this. I think the timing's bad. I think that, I just, I think it's fine that we'd raise the mayor's pay, but to raise trustee pay, I don't get it. And I'm opposed to it.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I, I understand what trustee Leach is trying to do and I support him in that, however, I wouldn't want a pay raise myself, but I would support a pay raise for the mayor for all that he does. So if there was a change in the ordinance, I would support that.
You can make a motion to make a change.
To trustee Leach's point, the, I apologize for interrupting you, trustee, the ordinance that is on the table addresses both the compensation for the mayor and compensation for the trustees. Tonight's functionally your deadline to act on this ordinance. With a motion and a second, which should be voted on first, an amendment could be made, which would strike Section, excuse me, Section 2 of ordinance number 21-20, which pertains to the increase in compensation for the trustees, which would then leave only at issue in the ordinance, the increase in compensation for the mayor. If that motion were to receive a second and it would pass, then we would have another vote on approving or disapproving the ordinance.
I wondered if, I don't want to put you on the spot, trustee Parrott, if you had any thoughts, since it's, it's an important subject and I respect your thoughts on it, I just want to know what everybody thinks.
I think I would echo your sentiment. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I think I would, I would support the mayor. I think he works, goes way above and beyond, you know, the call duty, you know, in the mayor's role. And I would, I would support a motion to strike the trustee pay raise and just to raise the mayor's.
Just make the motion.
Are you good with that?
I'd just make the motion.
All right.
I move that we strike Section 2 and just retain the mayor's pay raise.
Second.
Any other comments?
Clarification before roll is called, you're voting only to approve the amendment to the action. So a vote yes is a vote to strike the trustee pay increase from this ordinance. It's not approving the ordinance, it's only approving the amendment, then we're gonna have one more vote when the ordinance itself is amended.
And that would only raise the salary on whoever the newly elected mayor is. All right, call the roll.
Menold.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, yes. Just wanted to make sure.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now you need to call roll on the amended ordinance. Or you need, you have a motion, a second already, so you only would need to call roll unless there's more discussion.
Anyone have any other thing to say? We're voting on the trustees?
No, the mayor, the ordinance was just amended, so that motion, the second, made an amendment to the ordinance, it struck Section 2, which increased trustee compensation. So now what you're left with is an ordinance which only increases the compensation of the mayor. So what you just approved was an amendment, which modified the ordinance at issue, now we need a vote. Yes approves the increase in the mayor's compensation, no is rejecting the proposed increase in the mayor's compensation.
Okay.
The original motion and second are still on the table then? So the original motion and second are still on the table, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And then with council, since this is spending money, it requires four?
Correct.
Okay.
Everybody clear? We've had a lot of amended motions the last few minutes. That's okay, good discussion. All right, call the roll.
All right, Leach?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now what do we do together, too?
That, that's it. That includes that matter.
All right, any of the other trustees have anything tonight? We do, we do need a closed session.
Closed session is requested tonight for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives per five ILCS 120/2C2.
So if I can have a motion to move to closed session?
So moved.
Second. Mennel?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Motion passes.
[music]